Welcome you all to the regular meeting of the Monroe Planning Commission. Today is Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty five, and it is seven oh one P M. Liam, can you call or can you do roll call, please?
Yes, commissioners present is St. Rochina Coram, our commissioners Petrino, Lo, Lockhart, Bulk, and Lair and Dockets.
And we do not have anyone signed up for public comments this evening, so we will move on to Agenda Item four point one, approval of the May twelfth, twenty twenty five minutes.
I moved to approves. Oh, I didn't see any, anything that needed to be changed, so I moved to approve the minutes from May twelfth.
Thank you. You're being seconded. Is there any additional comments or questions for minutes? No? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose, say nay. Chair approves.
I need a clarification. We did receive notice that Mary Walsh was not going to be here tonight, so she should be excused.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, moving on to Agenda Item six point one, adopting the planning commission findings of fact and conclusions of law, unit lots subdivisions and code amendments, and Anita is doing the presentation on that.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. I'm here tonight to bring forth the planning commission findings of fact and conclusions of law for the unit lot subdivisions or U L S code amendments. Just gonna give you a quick timeline on how we came to this moment in this code amendment process. I brought forth an introduction to planning commission on March tenth of twenty twenty five. Then a draft U L S code discussion was held at the meeting on April fourteenth, twenty twenty five. At that meeting, planning commission feedback included allowing A D Us to be part of this uh unit lot subdivision process, um requiring easements for common areas rather than requiring homeowners associations. And then also consensus that parking requirement should not be reduced for these types of developments. There was also a discussion on utilities as if um each lot would be required to have its own water and sewer connection and other utilities. And um currently, I I had a discussion with our engineering department, and currently our code does require a separate connection for separate lots. So I know this may be cumbersome to some properties that um are are smaller in size, in size. But um for now, that it's what the code requires. Um so engineering kind of said, um you know, it's really up to the developer to come up with some creative ideas. Um and then they're willing to work with those developers as long as the requirement is meant as said before that each a lot has its own utility connection. The public hearing was held on May twelfth of twenty twenty five. And um a public hearing before city council is tentatively scheduled for June twenty fourth of twenty twenty five. Um we did receive one public comment. Um it was received after the deadline for that public hearing comment, but um I did uh send an email out to everyone. And it was basically um kind of like we talked about, um it was mostly in favor of the code amendments with just some, a couple suggestions, and one of those was the utility connection. So that will be part of the record when it, when it goes to, to city council. So the requested action tonight is move that the planning commission adopt these findings of fact and conclusions of law, authorize the chair of the planning commission to sign the findings of fact on behalf of the commission, and recommend that the Monroe City Council approve the proposed amendments to Chapter twenty two point six eight M M C subdivisions as required by Senate Bill five two five eight and minor text amendments to Chapter twenty two point one two definitions and Chapter twenty two point eight four M M C permit processing. Thank you, and I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion?
Oh, Kelsey, oh, Kelsey, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so um with the, that comment that came in from what the Snohomish County Association of Realtors, I agree with their concerns and recommendations and the feedback that we received from them on the shared utilities on what you were just saying. They recommended that we where shared and sub metered systems are feasible, that we make that at least an option. Um I agree with this in regards to sewers, the cost of individual sewer hookups and lines will obstruct like the small builders. This is like an additional permitting cost, and it's also a lot of extra labor and materials, which will be, it like, it'll add tens of thousands of dollars to each structure built if we have separate sewers. And um we're trying to remove barriers for like smaller housing. I think that that's gonna really be a huge barrier for that. Um along with that, with the disruption of the land, um which causes more cost for like drainage management. I think that'll just deter homeowners. Um and so I thought that was, thank you for sending that out. I know it's a little late for them to be telling us that, but I agree with that. So I feel like, is there a way we can adopt with having that added in there?
Um so that's actually under the engineering code, so it would have to be the engineering department that took that to council and um amended that code. And it's to my, it's my understanding that that's not the, on their plan to do that right now. But we are still gonna have those conversations, um just to let you know. So say somebody wanted to develop a piece of property, um not subdivide, but just uh develop a small lot, say for townhomes. Um so the requirement is uh one sewer connection per lot, so that particular development will only require the, the one connection or one, the one meter.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is, this is just for if you're creating separate lots, then that's when we require the separate connections.
Okay, and then um so on F one, when it's saying individual sewer service, that's why it seems like that would be in the, this code, not engineering. I don't know. I guess I'm confused. It, on F one, we can't say where feasible. I don't know. I guess I'm a little confused, but um.
Okay, yeah, and I can also, um, yeah, if it helps a little bit too, I can also see if maybe our engineering department would be willing to come by and talk about, about that a little bit. Cause it was my understanding too that um the, there's still, there's still cost either way um for, for the meter, for the construction, for developers to pay the city to do all that kind of work. So it was my understanding that the cost isn't that much of a difference, but, but yeah, I can definitely have engineering talk to.
I know we had some quotes on um some stuff previously, and it was sixteen thousand dollars just for the hookup and just to put in a hookup for um the sewer. That's not any of the lines run or anything like that.
Right. Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, that's true. But all the other costs they would still have to pay. So the, the.
They'd have to double it. Because then it's not all on this, in the same line. So not only will they have like a sewer hookup, now they have three lines ran. That's tripled or however many they do for each lot.
Um yeah, that, uh, that's true.
That's pretty significant.
Yeah, yeah, so, but.
I'm just really weary, weary about us not having some type of other verbiage that has this option of if it's feasible to not have to do all these extra materials and run into one. Um. I, I feel like we're gonna be putting up a huge barrier for small homeowners to do this with these costs.
Yeah, and um, and like I said too, well, um, we'll still, we'll still do the research and, and look into this. I think it's just mainly putting this out there as the code to just give an option for small, small lot development. And like you said, if we, if we, if we're not getting anyone coming in doing his application, you know, we can do some community outreach and.
How long would that process take if we did this and then it wasn't happening for a couple years or, or a year? Then we have to go and change this particular code.
Um, well.
That's like two years out.
Yeah, it would, it would be, it's a combination, so it would be, it would be this code um under zoning, and then it would also be the engineering code. So, so it's a two-step process.
So even if we've said yes on this one, then we'd have to go and change the code on that one.
Yeah, it's a, it's actually, yeah, it's an engineering requirement, so just to let you know, yeah, it's an engineering requirement on the zoning. Or I mean, it is also a zoning requirement, but it stems from an engineering requirement, because engineering is utilities. They're the ones that regulate the utilities and what happens with each lot.
Okay, and then so on the F two, um I also saw that all buildings shall meet all applicable provisions of the building and fire code. So does that mean like if a parent lot is cut up into a bunch of uh child lots, right? Does the, that front building have to be brought up to code? Cause this, to me, this sounds like that front lot would have to be brought up to code in order to do this on F two.
Um, are you talking about the actual code, the code section?
And on page thirty two, F two, um of our um, of what we're doing today.
Okay, so you, the subdivision section, so, okay, sorry. So I'm, I'm there, I'm there. So F, um.
F two, it says all buildings shall meet all applicable provisions of the building and fire code. So if we had like a old, I'm just wondering if that, if we have an old house that's cutting these lots up into chunks, does that front house have to be, that parent lot have to be brought up to the code according to that?
Are you talking about the structure itself?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, no, so we're talking more about, about setback requirements.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, so the, if there is an existing structure on the parent lot, that would have to meet all existing setback on that coverage. And then, but we, we wouldn't have to, if they're not doing anything to the structure, excuse me, then no.
Okay, yeah. Uh, and that's, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Kelsey. Commissioner Block?
Yes, on the same issue of the individual lots needing um hookups. So my understanding is primary an engineering code that drives that little language. Can we make sure that the language is such that it just refers to engineering requirements? And so that in the future, the engineering changes their code, we don't have to go back to change this. Anyway, just a suggestion of how we can um facilitate future changes without having to go back and changing this code. Does that make sense?
It does, um, yeah, it, it does make sense, yeah.
Thank you. That makes sense.
Um, also on that same idea, is there a way that, so the Realtors' comments to me are saying like they've already seen this as an issue somewhere else. And so is there a way we can have like a watch list or an idea board or something that is saying here's a potential concern to look at for, in the next year review, um along with, I'm sure, some other things, but as you mentioned, if we're gonna do a review and say, hey, nobody's taking advantage of this, and could it be due to one of these things that, that we had already kind of thought might come up? So I don't know how that could get wrapped into somebody's duties to follow up on something that's not required, but it would be kind of nice if, if we could have it called watch list or potential issues to watch out for.
Yeah, I can, yeah, that's a great idea. I can definitely put that on my to-do list. Um I, I'm interested as well, because this, this is a newer code in, in other cities as well, so I'm just curious. Maybe I can reach out to the other cities and say, hey, has any, has any developer been using this? And um yeah, definitely, I can definitely do that.
Thank you. Lance, do you have a comment or question?
Yeah, and I, and I, it's actually kind of a question for, or a reminder from, from, from Kay and, and Anita. I know that under the new state legislation, we're required to do a report, I'm not sure if it's yearly, on middle housing um and other housing um applications that are coming into the city. And, and maybe that's something that we could add a category in there, it would be voluntary on our part to show whether we're getting any applications for the unit lot subdivisions. I, I, I don't know, I'm curious, I, I'm curious what staff thinks about that.
Well, that, that report is due to Commerce in twenty twenty nine, so that's only, I mean, it's four years away. It absolutely could be included in one of the categories that we're following, because it's, it's type of housing, the cost of housing, it, because the whole reason uh we're being required to do it is showing our due diligence to actually achieve housing for all income levels, so that's, that's not a bad, that's not a bad idea. So in addition to what Anita's um agreeing to or putting on her work program, we're gonna have to do some form of analysis by twenty twenty nine anyway. All right.
Thank Kelsey.
Oh, Kelsey, go ahead.
Um, I'm on a couple of developer Facebook uh pages, and they have a lot of information on what's going well in Bellevue and in Seattle on this info. They're sharing a lot of like what's working, what's not working, um so I could forward some of that to us. I think it's really interesting on like, okay, we, maybe we don't have to be the guinea pigs of it, we can watch it happen in a couple of other towns. They're even talking about, okay, these ones that don't have garages aren't actually selling, so they're not really like, maybe we need to have a garage, three bedrooms are better than two. It's, it's a lot of really good back and forth and really open, um so I thought it's just been interesting. I didn't share.
All right.
Um, question, if a project comes up and they, can they request, um what sort of I want, um the change of the requirement or ha, or have them done differently? Or to just quickly, by whatever the requirements are, have to be done, are there ever exceptions?
So um there, there could be exceptions for the child lots, for the, for the unit lots, yes. So those are allowed to be smaller, so that's already um, that's already some exception to the bulk requirement, so, so um possibly setback lot width, but not utilities though, because it, it is in code and it's basically just like a short plot. So um you would have to provide those connections for each individual lot, but those other things, yes, the bulk regulations, yes, there are some exceptions.
Okay, thank you. Bob?
Do we know how other neighbor or neighboring cities handle, are handling this issue?
Um, as far as um code or um applications that have been coming?
This, this code of, of, of individual uh utility hookups?
Oh, individually utility hookups?
Yeah.
Um, I kind of based this code off of um Snohomish City of Snohomishes, and they require separate connection as well. Cause, because it's just, like I said, it's just like a short plot.
And. Yeah, so that, I mean, just to add on to that, to what Anita was saying, it, it's uh, we've been having this discussion, is a similar discussion as well regarding A D Us and whether or not you, you can um work, require, whether or not you want to require A D Us to hook to existing uh on utilities, which is through a side connection. So the, the answer is really a mix. There, there's some communities that require individual hookups, and there's some that don't, so it's, it's not like there's a sort of majority of like every, everybody is doing one thing or the other. It, and everybody is in the process of do, of adopting this code, so um there's more, more than one approach to, to doing that.
Do we have a motion?
I move that the planning commission adopt these findings of fact and conclusions of law, authorize the chair of the planning commission to sign the findings of fact on behalf of the commission, and recommend that the Monroe City Council approve the proposed amendments to Chapter twenty two point six eight M M C subdivisions as required by E S S B fifty two fifty eight and minor text amendments to Chapter twenty two point twelve M M C definitions and Chapter twenty two point eighty four M M C permit processing.
Thank you, Brandy. Is there a second?
Sure.
We'll have it seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I have, yeah, um can we move that with the revision of the verbiage as per the uh engineer code? I would, I think that that was a great idea. On, um.
On Tony's.
On Tony's, sorry, I can't hear your name, your last name, but um Bulk, Commissioner Bulk's idea, can we move with that revision? I just think it would be a lot of backpedaling or backstepping if I think it's a huge barrier.
Wait for Kelsey. So my question is to staff, how time sensitive this is?
So on this one, um, we actually reached out to our city attorney. It was our understanding that this was due the end of June of this year. However, in the process, it's gone through planning commission, but city council still has to hold their public hearing. They still have to go through their full review. So if the commission is making a request for consideration, that could be incorporated into their public hearing packet. Um, and then talking with our city attorney, we may have a little bit more time if we need it for further discussion. We're still, I, I need to follow up tomorrow, I've been out of town. I just saw the email.
Well, we, thank you. So I appreciate the support of my suggestion and uh, but it's also a, a sense of timing. And even including the language um doesn't move the uh changes that uh some of us may desire. So I think we should just go ahead. My sense is that um and adopted by the commissions, did you suggest that we could ask the council to change that verbiage?
Yeah, couldn't, couldn't we move it forward today with just suggesting that or no?
You could, but I, I, I'd like to provide some caution, because as Lance was alluding to, the same issue has come up with the accessory dwelling units. And when staff was trying to figure out the best way to move forward to address the concerns raised by both the commission and the council, if you, if you remove the one, one connection per residential lot in Title twenty two, which is what you all have purview over, does the public works standards and codes exist today that would ensure that connections are still being required? And so i- it's, I don't, as much as I would like to support this moving forward quickly, I think more work is needed. But if you're able to say in your motion, or if, if somebody's willing to make an amendment just to, to flag it, that this issue is still of concern to the planning commission.
I would suggest that we amend the motion that's on the floor. Um, what I need from staff right now is a specific statement that would clearly convey what we're trying to do. And then if you give me that, I will make that uh motion to amend the motion on the floor. So um, cause I don't want to suggest it, because I think staff has more skill in this than I do. Make sure we have language that um meets the requirements. So, uh, uh, if that's possible, if not, oh well.
Thank you. Bob?
I, I believe we need to tread carefully when we are, as a planning commission, we are making recommendations uh on a code that we don't have purview over. We, we don't have any purview over the, over the engineering code. Now, we can advocate the flexibility in the application process. But I don't think we want to put that in our findings of fact.
And then, also, um if I comment to the um, the uh, the comments that we received through email from the Realtors' Association, that will be forwarded to city council. Um, we also, as we are part of planning commission, but we are also community members who have the ability to go before council at any meeting um to, to propose. So there isn't anything that's stopping us or discouraging us, um any of us to go to the public hearing for the city council and make a brief comment on that or to email. I mean, there's things that can be done there. So there's a few options here for us to be able to convey our concerns um over a code that isn't fully in our purview right now. Um and so moving forward as it is, this, I think this works with the umbrella that we're working with legally. Um, but as long as we're communicating to the city council in however, whatever way or however many ways, um just to emphasize that this is a concern um that we've had, that we've kind of, I think as a whole have shared, because I appreciate this discussion. This isn't something I would have thought of, and it, you know, we want to be removing those barriers. So I think my understanding is there's a pretty good consensus here that that is something to consider. So I think it'd be fair to say that as a council or as a commission, that we want to make sure that the city council is aware of that, and that maybe that means more work is done and brought to the table, whether it can be brought to the table this year, or if it has to be pushed further down the road based on, you know, all the work um that's on the uh agenda moving forward. Um, just bringing it to the council's attention that we, we do feel passionately about this and, and share the concerns expressed by the Realtors' Association. I don't know who's first, Tony?
Thank you. I just want to clear what I was suggesting. I'm not sure Bob understood it. So I was not suggesting that we give a specific recommendation of, of um more than one uh building attached to a hookup. I was just saying that the language should say refer to the um engineering uh public works standards. And with the public work standards in the future changes, then you don't have to change the language in what's before us. So we're not suggesting in the, in the document, a recommendation, because they have to do their research. But we were saying, and we need to do our research too. We don't have enough information, but just saying that we refer to this present, to the standards of the public works or engineering department. And then if that changes in the future, we don't have to change this. That's all I was suggesting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think, I think when you look at the uh actual documentation, when we say that, that it must adhere to all applicable code and regulation, that satisfies that. As, and what we're doing is looking at the code and regulations at the time the application comes in. Currently, we don't have any applications. There's no problem has been identified. And so when, when the process begins, we'll, we'll start getting the uh proposals from developers, and they're gonna say, hey, in order for me to pencil this development out, I need to, we need to have a single utility. And at that time is when we, when staff goes back and works with engineering and try to figure out, how can we accomplish getting this development approved within the current code?
I just want the staff to come up with any language that they're comfortable with or not.
Well.
Wait, I agree on that, because it was unclear as the direction we are headed, but I have a word document pulled up ready to type. If that's the direction the commission would like to go.
Kelsey?
Um, just in a response to what Bob just said, it's just gonna be too late at that point. I feel like that's years out on it. I, I can see that being way too expensive for like me to put an A D U in the back with how my, like, any of the ones in our neighborhood, just if they can't connect to the other sewer, the setbacks will just not be possible. And then we're gonna even have smaller lots for these child lots that just won't be possible, but I feel like I would love to move this forward. I don't want to stop anything here. I want, if we could just asterisk that this is still up for discussion, and maybe city council could give us a suggestion. Or I, I would like to move forward on this, but I just don't know how right now.
Well, there is a motion and a second on the table um to do that, and then we'd have to have, I think, uh disprove this or to say no to this or have another motion put on the table.
Or you can amend the motion.
Well, you gotta go through the second and then, yeah, if we get through the second and then.
I am not going to be making at this time an amendment to the motion on the table.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say yea.
Yeah, yes.
All oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries. It was five to one.
Okay.
Moving on to Agenda Item six point two, adopting the planning commission findings of fact and conclusions of law commute trip reduction for code amendments, and that's also Anita.
Yes, um, sorry, but can I just say one, one thing about the last um code amendment? Um, I, I really appreciate everyone's discussion. I, I would more, feel more comfortable talking engineering first before suggesting any type of, of language change. Um, cause just from talking, so just for example, um the engineering code is, is Chapter um twenty three point one zero, and that's where the, the public works design standards are located. Um, so it's my understanding. Um, so it's my understanding that they're not planning to change the, the, the single lot requirement for utility connections. That, that was my understanding when I was talking engineering, which was just last week. So, um, but I would like to have some more conversations with them and see if they have any ideas for me to, to put that in there or any other type of flexibility. So I would definitely get back to the planning commission on that. So for the next, yeah, thank you. Thank you for the discussion. For the next item, I'm bringing forth the Planning Commission findings of fact and conclusions of law for the commuter production CTR code amendments and CTR plan update. Uh, just go ahead and go through another quick timeline of that one. Let's see. Um, I came before Planning Commission for introduction on, um, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, at the time, there was no questions or required updates to the code or the CTR plan. A, the public hearing was scheduled and held on May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. And a public hearing before City Council is tentatively scheduled for June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. The requested action is move that the Planning Commission adopt these findings of fact and conclusions of law. Authorize the chair of the Planning Commission to sign the findings of fact on behalf of the commission and recommend that the Monroe City Council approve proposed code amendments to chapter twenty-two point eight eight MMC commuter production CTR and adopt the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine City of Monroe CTR plan as required by state law.
Are there any questions? No? Alright, do we have a motion?
I'll move that the planning commission adopt these findings of fact and conclusions of law. Authorize the chair of the planning commission to sign the findings of fact on behalf of the commission. I recommend that Monroe City Council approve the proposed code amendments to chapter twenty-two point eight eight MMC commute trip reduction. Adopt the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine City of Monroe CTR plan as required by state law.
Thank you, Tony. Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Carla. Is there any additional discussion? Nope. Alright, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The chair votes yea. So motion carries.
Thank you.
Right, and then moving on to Agenda Item six point three, which is proposed amendments relating to permit processing and Washington Senate Bill five two nine zero local permitting, and this one is with Kate.
Yeah, thank you. So it's, it's been a little while since I first introduced this topic back in January. Um, just as an overview, this is, um, if I was going to boil it down, we are revising the timelines that planners have to review and approve land use applications. This does not talk about engineering permits. It does not talk about building permits. It's specific to land use. And so got to go all the way back to the nineties when the first, uh, thing was called regulatory reform and said you have to consider everything at the same time and it used to be a hundred and twenty days from a time an application is deemed complete to making a decision. There's some caveats for subdivisions and short plats, but now we're giving, we're being given some new guidance. And the thought behind it is if you have a comprehensive plan and your development standards are the same to implement your comprehensive plan and an applicant submits an application, it's consistent with everything you're asking them to do. It should be a relatively short process. Not all processes are the same. So we have currently, uh, four, yeah, four types of permits. The first one, uh, does not require public, it's an administrative decision. So, um, Lance is the zoning administrator makes the decision. There's no public comment. There's no environmental review. It's pretty quick and typically, um, you meet the code, you get approved. The next category we have is a type two. It does have a public, public comment period. It could also have CIPA. The comment period is typically fourteen days. And so it's a little bit longer, but still today it's a hundred and twenty days for the whole clock. And then we have, um, from there, we have a type three, which is public notice, public hearing, which is another clock, because you have to provide, uh, public notification before the hearing occurs. And then the hearing occurs, and so that is a little bit longer. And then the final one, uh, today is the type four, and those are the legislative ones that do not have to follow a clock. It's because it's coming to Planning Commission, City Council, you're changing your development regulations or your comprehensive plan. And so what this bill is doing is, is acknowledging that these types of processes are different. So you should be able to quickly get through that application that your, uh, zoning administrator has the authority to approve. And so the, um, clock on that one is sixty-five days. If you do notice, it's a hundred, a hundred days. And if it's a public hearing, it's a hundred and seven. Or excuse me, a hundred and seventy. And so, um, the information from the first meeting is attached to your packet. So you can review the law and the specific code changes. But I wanted to walk you through what we've been able to accomplish since we saw you back in January. So the first one, and I'm going to walk you through this. I don't have any slides. It's pretty dry material. So as you go, I will give you the page number so you can see where we're making these changes. Part of this code also is if the city does not meet the timelines that are adopted, we have to provide a reimbursement. And so we do need to make a change to chapter three point three four, which are application fees. There's also a provision in the, in that state law that says the city does not have to collect the full hundred percent of fees. You can collect it eighty percent and then collect the rest at the end of the process. We would prefer to collect the full hundred percent, and if we do not meet the timeline, work backwards. So on page one fifty-one of three seventy-three is this, um, new section talking about reimbursement for exceeding land use application review timeframes. Um, I am working on the language. It's, it's almost like a double negative. So I'm trying to find a better way. It's that last piece. Um, so where I think I'm going to go is a ten percent land use application fee refund will be issued for land use permits when the decision exceeded the adopted review timeframes of the code section by twenty percent or less of the original time period, clean up the language a little bit. And then, um, we have to refund twenty percent if we exceed the timeline by twenty percent, and that's on the next page, uh, one fifty-two. Any questions on that one? Pretty straightforward. Kelsey?
Um, on the, the first one, is it supposed to be not, is it ten, ten percent on the first one for both of them and then twenty percent on? So if they exceed ten percent, it's supposed to be a ten percent reimbursement or they're both twenty percent reimbursements?
Oh, you know what? Good catch. It's ten percent for the first one and twenty for the second.
And then if there's, if there's any more than that, is it just, this is just it?
That's it. It's ten or twenty. But I want to be clear, we had to provide this information from all of the permits processed last year. I think Hannah provided this information. Last year, uh, we only missed the time clock for two applications and that was already mutually agreed upon between the city and the applicant. So I am highly confident that our staff will meet these new timelines. Yep. Okay, the next section is, um, definitions. And I'm not going to go through these other than to give you, um, it's, it's clarifying closed record versus open record. And then for the open record, so for example, um, a home occupation, or not home occupation. Let's go with an accessory dwelling unit today. That requires public notice, but Lance makes the decision. There's no public hearing, so if it gets appealed, then we call it an open record public hearing. Because that is when you're providing all your evidence that this doesn't meet the code. It shouldn't, it should not have been approved. And then if that gets appealed, then it's a closed record. You cannot add any more information. So we're adding these definitions, so it's clear when it's open, when it's closed. Um, and then there was also a clarification. Um, instead of doing development permit, which is a very generic term, the state statute has project permit or permit. Excuse me, project permit application. So we are following the state requirements to revise that, um, definition. Again, pretty straightforward. Um, and that, I'm sorry, and that's, um, chapter twenty-two ten, right? Definitions, twenty-two twelve. Alright, so moving on, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna get better the next time I bring you these changes. It's going to be the specific section. I kind of put a little note in the agenda bill. We're not looking at making substantive changes to the different things that you're reviewing. All of this is really looking at process and process only. So I'm giving you that little notation because the sign code is the next one. Not recommending changes to the sign code, but but there, there is a section at the end of the sign code that talks about, um, its variances and appeals today. And some of the items, um, if you look at the strike through edits, there are processes in here that we don't have. So those are being pulled out. And then to be clear about, um, the variance process, we have a different chapter. So we're, that's, that's all this is doing. It is specifying that here's an option. Here's the process. Go to chapter twenty-two eighty-four for processing. Any questions, Chelsea?
And just what page is the signed stuff on?
Sorry, um, yeah, one fifty-six and one fifty-seven. Um, and then we also made, um, just having, I've been taking this with the planning department. We would like to include an administrative departure option in this section. It would be the same as the design standards where if it's, if it's within the confines of the code, it's not asking for something like you're only allowed to have twenty-five percent or twenty-five square foot sign and you want a hundred, you have to go for bearings for that. You have to show that there's special conditions. But if there's something, uh, we've got the Walmart situation, Walmart is redoing their signs right now. Uh, it's a package that's a quasi judicial application, but the proposal they have is less signs that there, that are there today. But it doesn't meet code. And so there is a different provision. We're recommending that process be accounted for in the sign code. Okay. Moving on. Um, and then throughout, um, all of Title Two, wherever it talked about the engineering standards. I'm going to do a little more digging on this, but I asked engineering for some input. The standard right now is, um, one inch equals fifty feet. And a request was made to be a little bit more specific that when we get the, um, we need at least one sheet that includes the entire development. So the language is a little bit, um, long. The first one is on page one fifty-nine. You're following along. Um, and so it's talking about specific size. It might be a little bit too detailed, um, but I'm trying to acknowledge what engineering is requesting when they're starting to do their reviews. Um, and then this is, I'm in the site plan review section. There's two items I'm also adding in. This is a little bit outside of my substantive changes because they're missing items on page one sixty. When we're doing a site plan review, we actually do require to see the, um, the preliminary elevations of the building. That's not listed in the requirements, but it's in the section of what we have to review to approve it. So that's being added in as well as the exterior lighting plan, which is in chapter twenty-two of the municipal code, which is the building code. If you read that, that's actually a requirement. So now I'm making sure that our applicants aren't missing that. Uh, the next change is also on this page. We are breaking out. You can come in with a site plan review that does not require environmental, environmental review. So we want to go the type one. It's straightforward. It's easy. There's no app, there's no review. But we also get site plan applications that do require CIPA, the environmental review. So we want to create a path one, type one and type two. So now we've got, we're accommodating the public review process. Alright, next section is uh, variances, but the only one on that, I think what, yeah, for variances, the only thing is the engineering change. And that's on page one sixty-five. No other changes to that section. Subdivision code again is getting, um, there's, there's a few changes I do want to bring to your attention. Um, I will be updating everything. Anita's project is moving forward for mine. So we are continuing to build on each code amendment. So when code publishing says, oh, wait a minute. You just made a change. Do I keep it or not? So this will be updated, assuming hers gets codified before I bring this back for public hearing. If not, I'll just continue to make reference that the section's been changed. Um, there are a few things. So the first one is on page one seventy-one. We're adding in the exemption for personal wireless services. That is in state statute and it was an act, um, it was a request that was made recently. So I want to acknowledge it. It's actually in state statute. It wasn't in our code. I figured I'm working on process anyway. Go ahead and add that one in. The next, uh, group of changes are on page one seventy-two. And this is beginning with the process being very clear that subdivisions are a three-part process. You have the preliminary plat review process. Then you submit for your engineering plans and you do the infrastructure, uh, do all the development installation of water sewer and electrical. And then the final step is that final plat, which is approving the mat, so map. Uh, so I wanted to clarify that. That's something we haven't had and can create some confusion with our development community. So we're, I want to clarify that. Again, on page one seventy-three, it's that, um, engineering scale. It might change again. Um, I think that was it for subdivisions. Yeah, that's it for subdivisions. Alright, so then the real meat of this proposed change begins on page, uh, two hundred and twelve. And that's chapter twenty-two eighty-four permit processing. And so this is really where we get into the meat of the changes. Talking about, um, the, what is exempt, what is not exempt. Building permits are one hundred percent excluded by state statute as our boundary line adjustments. Um, right away vacations. So that list on page two twelve is consistent with state statute. The items on page two thirteen, uh, we've also removed and that is, um, business licenses. That is, it's not something that goes through land use review, but planners have to review it. So I want to make sure we were capturing that. Um, the next one is, oh, number eight is actually included state statute. And that's, uh, development of public lands. That's actually excluded from the timelines. And then number nine, the wireless communications. We have to follow the federal, uh, guidelines on that. It has its own process. And so working with our attorney's office, they have recommended that we, um, exclude this from the applicability because it has its own time clocks. Um, and so now getting further down on page two thirteen, we start getting into those type one, type two. You will see from Amy's conversations with you for accessory dwelling units, we have now included that as a type one application. Uh, type two. Uh, is it, okay, so type two, we are adding in the design review administration. It was already there, but it was missing the first two words of the uh, review type. You'll also see the site plan in this one now. This is the site plan that is not exempt for CIPA. So we did add that one in. Um, so then getting down to a number eleven. So our temporary encampments code has its own process. But it is very, um, it is not consistent with how we operate as a city. When that code was adopted, the one thing that was of concern is once the administrator makes a decision, any appeal goes straight to superior court. So we have, um, ensured that that process still happens. But we want to make sure it followed the same timing. So it will, it will have a fourteen day comment period. Um, for temporary encampments, it actually in the code section, you have to have a community meeting depending on what type you're looking at. That's not changing. We just want to make sure that we're being more consistent with an application that requires public review. And then, um, I've also added in the unit lot subdivision work that you just discussed earlier this evening. Um, the new, the next news, the new stuff is on page two fifteen. And, um, I am reusing the type four permits. This is now the quasi judicial applications that go to City Council. So this is a site specific rezone. Those applications, the public hearing is at the City Council. They make the decision. The decision is appealable to superior court. So this is something new. So this is something new that's being added in. And then type five permits. This is also kind of a wonky category, but this is capturing your annexation and your development agreement. It's another type of review that goes to city council only. And then the appeals go to superior court. They're not necessarily quasi judicial. And so trying to better capture this, because these are some things that our city attorney is like. Okay, in your current code, this is correct, but it doesn't tie out with who the decision body is. So again, taking that opportunity, expanding the type of permits to be a little bit more clear. And then I have retitled type four applications are now type six and that is back to our legislative. So everything you're doing this evening, looking at code amendments and that comprehensive plan. And. Such as technical stuff. The next piece. So again, on, in the title, in this title, it also talks about. What is required for site plan applications? So on page two eighteen. You will see that I've included the lighting plan requirements that again is specified in chapter fifteen. But a lot of times our development community or applicants aren't aware of that requirement. So we're being very clear about that. And then the timing for that, the time we have to make a determination if an application is complete. Which means they've submitted everything that was on the checklist for the application. Just clarifying. If it's not, if we have not sent a letter that you're out, your application is complete or incomplete. It is automatically complete on that twenty-ninth day. So that's on page two nineteen. And that's, that's been around since the nineties. So just being very clear again, taking this opportunity. To clean up. At the bottom of that same page, item number F, I'm, I'm providing some additional clarification. So. The type two applications that have that notice of application. There are agencies and entities that we need to be sending all of our applications to because they're the utility provider, like the cable companies, the phone companies. If there, if there's a project adjacent to US two or five twenty-two, that automatically needs to go to Wash Dot. That's not a notice of application. We should be doing that already. And so that's what this letter F is doing. It's specifying if these projects include this, if it's that, we need to be being. Part of our internal review process needs to be reaching out to those agencies. So that's something new. And you'll see there's four different categories, utility providers, Washington State Department of Transportation. I've also covered Burlington Northern railroads as well as Snohomish County. Then getting down to page two twenty, or excuse me, two twenty H. This covers all of those new timeframes. Again, as I mentioned earlier, subdivisions and shore plats have their own clocks. They are less timed than we are now given for a type one review. But there's a different state statute that we have to follow. So we're also acknowledging that. So again, a type one permit is sixty-five days from the time the city says this application is complete. It is a hundred days for a type two application and it is a hundred and seventy days if there is a public hearing required. And. So the next round of changes begin on page two twenty-five and these are the tables. So table twenty-two eighty-four oh six oh, this expands the new categories. It counts for new type five and six. It also accounts for the items that we've been talking about, the accessory dwelling units, the unit lot subdivisions, a site plan with and without CIPA review. Excuse me. And then the next one on page two twenty-seven. The decision makers again, accounting for those two additional types of permits and who makes the final decision, who it's appealable to. Underneath that is this new section I was starting to talk about with the definitions, open public hearing, closed public hearing. This is now denoting what, which one it is and at what point in the process. And I think that covers the other two on page two twenty-eight again, or just expanding the tables to accommodate the two new types of permits. The other new piece is on page two thirty, letter number H. So we've had, since I have been back. We had one project where two completely different applications were approved for the same property. And when I was reviewing other codes, they had this. This concept in here. So this is definitely, this is an area where if you don't like it, you let us know. But it's trying to state that. If you have approval for a permit and you're coming in with something totally different, it voids out that first permit. You need to make a decision because in our office, we're like, which one is it? And so this came out of the city of Edmonds. So please take a close look at that. Again, it's page two thirty, letter H. And that is something that we have flexibility on. And then the final group of edits is under the appeal section on page thirty-two. Again, it's clarifying which. Which appeals. So if it's an administrative, it goes to our hearing examiner. If it was done by the hearing examiner, it goes to, depending on what it is, it could be going to superior court. If it's the council goes to superior court. If it's a land use decision, if it's legislative, it goes to the growth management and hearings board. So I plan on coming back one more time. If I don't see any. You don't have huge red flags for me today. I'm going to finish this draft and submit it to the Department of Commerce by the end of the week. Of course, reaching out to our attorneys just to make sure they don't have any concerns with the direction we're going. And ensuring it's consistent with the state, state law. And oh, one other thing that's in your packet, just, it's a little bit bigger. But I created this, I shared this with you back in January and it's showing you. No, no, there you go. Make sure Kelsey can see it. It's the color coding. If something's being, becoming a little bit. Quicker to review or we're recommending it be a little bit longer to review because of CIPA. All of that is noted in this table and I'd be happy to answer any questions on that as well. Chelsea?
For that, that one that had multiple projects go on it, were they just trying to use the same? Like the same fee for that or they wanted to have?
Yep. It was, it was a subdivision that then came in as a site plan for multifamily.
And. Because they just went in a different direction or they're like, hey, let's try to get two reviews in the same. Application fee or something or like, no.
One literally got all the way through the review process and then I'm not sure if the property sold or. The property owner hired another entity to look at a different type of development, but. Both projects, you could do a short plat or you could do this site plan for multifamily. Out there back in further civil review for the short plats.
Oh, yeah.
Back to their first idea. So now we've got two projects going on.
Yeah.
They paid all the fees for both. It's crazy. Yeah.
And then I have one more question on, is like the, on that two twenty, is the a hundred and seventy days pretty standard for the public hearing? That's like a, that's all across the board, a hundred and seventy days is the max?
Well, it used to be, we had a hundred and twenty. So I actually appreciate a little bit more cushion. Because when you have a public hearing, so first you have to do your fourteen day comment period. And then you. Assume that you're, it's, I'm going to assume this is a perfect application. No changes are needed. And so once you get through that fourteen day review, or excuse me, yeah, fourteen day. Public notice of application. You continue, continue your review, but you have another time clock. We are required to provide ten day notice in the paper. But fourteen day notice to post the site. And then put the notices on our identified locations around city hall and post the site. And then you also, at that same time, you know, when your hearing is going to happen. And it could be three weeks, four weeks before you can get the hearing before your hearing examiner. So the hundred and seventy is actually appreciated. It's, it can be. A squeeze of a hundred and twenty, just depending on when our hearing examiner is available.
Randy? You said that it's not really common for the two things to happen where the one property owner puts in two separate applications. And it seems to me like it makes it really clear here that it's not, that it, that the applicant would know. So you tell them. You already have something approved. Did you, did you realize that if we process this, it's going to withdraw it? Because it says in here that it would not be the goal to try to withdraw something, but it just doesn't. I want to be sure that there's a notice part that they do notice the applicant.
Oh, we did that this time. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's just, it's such a strange occurrence, especially when you're. It takes a lot to review an application. I mean, we're, we're looking against our codes and then we're coordinating with the public works department and the fire depart, fire district. And so when you're going down this track and you're expecting these things to come in and then they switch gears, it's. And then they go back like Leanne was explaining on this particular one. We're like, which one is it? And so, yeah, absolutely.
They definitely know that they have to and, okay.
Yep. Like any other questions? No? So this probably will not be back to you at your second meeting in June. It might take me a little bit longer. So I'll be back in July and then. I'll have one more review and then I'll set the public hearing and we'll move along. Also on this one, I do want to be clear, the state law, we have to follow those, these new time clocks. The state superseded our authority. So we're already working under these new timelines. I just want to make sure that we're doing our code the way that works best for Monroe. Thank you, please. Yeah. Alright, moving on to new business. Agenda item seven point one, introduction to critical areas regulations states, which is also. Last mandate. So thank you, Leanne. So every time the city does the required periodic update or updating our comprehensive plan. We are also required to evaluate all of our development regulations. And critical areas are also called out in addition to reviewing development regulations. In this instance though, we have an extra year if we show progress. So we actually did start this last year, but had to shift gears to complete the comprehensive plan. And so tonight I just want to start introducing this to you. My goal, similar to implementing the, the comprehensive plan where I'm trying to do the easy stuff first. And then do the harder stuff as we continue on. This does have to be adopted by the end of this year. So tonight I'm just going to give you a, a high level overview, but introduce you to the easy piece, which is definitions. And there were some requested changes that the state asked of us the last time we did a critical areas update. So I can also provide that information. Next slide. Okay, so in your packet, I have provided you the full, our entire critical areas ordinance. And just like. The subdivision code, oh, sorry, I'll restate this. All of our definitions are in the definition chapter twenty-two twelve. It used to be our critical area definitions were with critical areas, but the decision was made to go a different way. So when I get to the definitions, we're talking about title twenty-two twelve. It is part of it and each definition associated with a critical area has that at the beginning. So you're queued in, you can go to C's and. And I looked at it that way. What is in your packet is just the critical areas. Title. Again, as I mentioned, we are required to do this when we do our comprehensive plan update. We are given until the end of this year. And then some of the changes that were made is there is even greater focus on best available science. So you will now see a definition. That piece is not ready for your review yet, but in the beginning, where I'd like to go in our code. Is at the beginning of the chapter, here are the different citations to review. Because we have a wetlands and streams and steep slopes map. But it may not cover everything. Department ecology has maps. The Department of Fish and Wildlife has maps. Snohomish County has maps of critical areas. And so there are a lot of other places where you can get information. And so. What I've seen in other codes is they're starting to provide those citations as other forms of best available science as you're beginning your work. The other thing that has changed is we are needing to focus on avoidance. So that's always been when you are doing a project that has a critical area, it's part of that hierarchy. Avoid mitigate onsite or onsite mitigation, offsite mitigation, or you pay into an offsite fund. This is really, the state has changed because we're focusing on function and value. And so that's another thing that I will be looking at as I'm going through this revision. The other things in your pocket, your packet tonight are the comprehensive plan maps that are out of the natural environment. It covers our watershed basins. It has that streams and wetland areas are steep slopes. And so that's a good starting point. Next slide. Critical areas. What are they? So I'm just going to give you the quick definitions and this is in your packet as well. So wetlands are defined by the state as areas inundated or saturated by groundwater or surface water. At a frequency and duration sufficient to support and that under normal circumstances do support a prevalence of vegetation adapted. For life in saturated soils. Wetlands generally include swamps, marshes, bogs and similar areas. Wetlands do not include those artificial wetlands intentionally created from non-wetland sites. Including but not limited to swamps, canals, detention facilities. Waste water treatment facilities, farm ponds and landscape amenities. Or those wetlands created after July first nineteen ninety that were unintentionally created as a result of the construction of a road, street or highway. Wetlands may include those artificial wetlands intentionally created from non-wetland mitigation areas to mitigate for conversion of wetlands. So that last one, there is an example, if you go past. So one seventy-fourth past. The sky, the Cadman site, there's actually a wetland bank down there. That's what this is referring to. The other one is the Narbe facility in Everett, kind of by the Boeing plant again. That was intentionally created for people to mitigate. The next one is the critical aquifers recharge areas. Again, this is areas with a critical recharging effect on aquifers used for potable water, including areas where an aquifer. That is the source of drinking water is vulnerable to contamination. That would affect the potability of the water or is susceptible to reduced recharge. So if you go in the comprehensive plan, one of the things our consultant did is reached out to those resources in the twenty fifteen plan. We did have identified critical offer recharge areas. According to Snohomish County, we don't have any in Snohomish County, or excuse me, we don't have any within our city limits. And so I'm going to follow up on this one, but it is my understanding that we do not have critical aquifer recharge areas. In the city of Monroe anymore. See if you have a question.
Yeah, I'm just curious because I know there was still wells and not held years ago. I mean, not.
Yeah.
Years, like two or three years ago. Matter of fact, when Walmart was being built. They had a problem with their aqua. Charge area because the land that Walmart can't build on. Is because they hit a string, underground stream.
Oh, interesting. Okay. So again, I'm going to follow up on this, but that's the research that they came across.
Don't know how many wells because of all developments up in North Hill.
Yeah.
One time there's quite a few. Actually, one time they even had their own water district up there.
Well, there, there are.
Years ago.
There's still the Roosevelt Water Association, which is not a district and that's off Roosevelt Road. The Monroe thirty application that is a separate water district. Monroe Woodlands is a separate water district than the city of Monroe. So we still have them, we still have them up there, but they're buying water from the city of Everett, just like we do.
Yes.
Another question? Okay, frequently flooded areas, lands in the flood plain subject to at least one percent or greater chance of flooding in any given year. Or within areas subject to flooding due to high groundwater. These areas include but are not limited to streams, rivers, lakes, coastal areas, wetlands and areas where high groundwater forms ponds on the ground surface. So we cover this in a couple of different areas. We have our shorelines, which covers all the areas along. Um, all the areas along, uh, Woods Creek and the Sky Comish. It is also included in. Uh, chapter fifteen, no, fourteen frequently flooded areas, and that's the FEMA maps. So we are, we are very lucky in Monroe that most of these lands are already public. Um, but that's another area that we need to, um, protect. Geologically hazardous areas, areas that, uh, because of their susceptibility to erosion, citing earthquake, or other geological events. Are not suitable for citing commercial, residential, or industrial development consistent with public health or safety concerns. Uh, we do have a handful in Monroe, steep slopes. Um, the other one is liquefaction, so it turns to mud. And then the final one is fish and wildlife, uh, habitat conservation areas, areas that serve a critical role in sustaining needed habitats and species. For the functional integrity for the ecosystem and which if altered may reduce the likelihood that the species will persist. Over the long term, these areas may include but are not limited to rare or vulnerable ecological systems. Communities and habitat or habitat elements included seasonal ranges, breeding habitat, winter range. And movement corridors and areas with high relatively population density species. Uh, species richness. On this one, I will note this covers endangered species. So we've got Chinook, um, the Dolly Madison trout within our. We have basically fish that are endangered. Um, I'm not aware of mammals, um, but that would cover this one. All right, next slide. So you're going to get tired of seeing the slide, but now on, when we're talking about code amendments, we really do need to consider. The planning goals and critical areas is an interesting one because you're balancing the protection of the natural environment, natural resources. Potentially with property rights as well as we're trying to accommodate all this growth. And so how do you do that? So we'll continue reminding you of the trade-offs as we're going through these code amendments. Um, big picture. There were not huge changes in the buffer requirements, which is a relief, but we do have some provisions that we will be looking at. Um, that could. Restrict development as it occurs today. So when we get there, I will highlight those for you as we have the conversation. Next slide. Just a reminder, why are we doing this? Um, the biggest one is public safety and that really gets to the, um, the. Um, landslide hazards, the fuzzy flooding hazards, protection of property. Um, and then protecting environmental areas. It's also air quality, water quality. So that's why it's important. That we protect these areas. Final one. And then again, I just kind of want to go back to where I started before I go through the definitions. This is going to be a multi-month review. The goal is that I bring this back to you in September, September, October for the formal review process, so I can get it to city council. Uh, for final adoption before the end of the year. Part of this is reviewing all of the resources available. One of them I did put in your packet was the Commerce Handbook. I thought that was a really good one because there's a lot of additional links in that that you can click on and learn a little bit more about critical areas and what we're trying to accomplish with this round of updates. Um, I do have the Department of Fish and Wildlife have already reached out to me, so I will also be having conversations with subject matter experts. And then, uh, as the code amendments are prepared, I will continue just bringing them to you for your review. Uh, for questions and then continuing on the process. And then again. Um, I'm hoping to have this wrapped up September, October for formal review. Any questions before we dive into definitions? So.
Yeah, reviewing this today, one area that was really. Um, I was interested in was on page three eleven, twenty-two point eight zero point zero eight zero has to deal with the, um. Uh, the density of housing where there's critical areas and how on the non-critical area, you can great get greater density. That is, uh, um, I have great interest in just giving you a heads up so that when you go into it and do your preparation. That, um, that's going to be, uh, one that I'll be looking closely. Okay?
The density transfer.
Density transfer. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? All right, so I do want to run through this really quickly. Um, this again, to me is the easy piece. Um, the definitions, the, uh, way I've set this up is all of the definitions we currently have are in the. Middle or left, left middle, uh. Row. The things that need to change to be modified are in the right-hand column. Um, I'm not going to go through them, but I would like you to review. If you have questions about any of these, please send me an email. I'm happy to respond. Um, there's only a handful that we did not have. Most of them just required some modification. That. That, that's it for tonight.
Thank you. Moving forward to agenda item seven point two, community development, April twenty twenty-five monthly report.
Hey, thank you, Chair. Uh, here's our community development month report for the month of April. Um, I'm, my plan is to just kind of highlight some of the projects, um. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to let me know as we run through here. So in the month of April, we had three pre-application meetings. One was for a potential new ADU using the conversion of a carport. Uh, one was for the wastewater treatment plant. They're going to demolish it and replacing one of the existing buildings on site that they use for deep watering. Uh, and then the final one was a potential new coffee shop at four oh nine at North Kelsey Street. That's the old state roofing property. But our usual numbers for, um, permits and inspections, code enforcement, business licenses for the month. Um, project highway highlight for the month of April has been updating everything with the new city logo and the new branding update just across the board. Uh, permitting staff is responsible for keeping over ninety building engineering and land use permit checklists and applications up to date and ready for customers. Um, in addition to that, we also have all of our many, many, many templates for letters, um. But let's see, letters, review checklists, um, this community development report, all that's being updated, um. We've been working out through the month of April and then continuing on as we come across different documents that you needed. So you'll be seeing that across all city, all community development documents if you're not already. Um, projects. You guys are pretty in the loop. I would say in a lot of these, so stop me if you have any questions about anything or if anything jumps out at you. A lot of things in the works right now, um, meaning like in construction. Um, building permit numbers. Uh, we did process a lot of residential permits in April. The permit staff did, uh, we issued twenty-three residential permits. Um, I think that was probably the push to get a lot of permits out the door before we've been a little bit light stacked in the permit department. Past month. Dylan here, um, our building officials, DC Chriswell, attended the, um, ICC code conference in Florida. He received two scholarships to go down there and do so. So he was part of that conference where, uh, the building. Community talks about different code updates for the international code council. And so that's a pretty big deal that he got to go and be a part of that. We processed seven firework stands permits for the fourth of July sales this year. And the finance examiner position, um, has been filled. They were supposed to start June second, but now hopefully June sixteenth. Code enforcement, um, Kevin's updates are just continuing as always with the temporary signage. And then as we're moving into the more months now, keeping an eye on vegetation. Business licenses, the usual list here of all new brick and mortar or relocated brick and mortar. The code amendments, I was just kind of going to skip over these since you guys are right in the thick of this, but again, if anything, wanting the information, let me know. Out of the piece we haven't talked about tonight. Our final section here, try not to make anybody dizzy. Sorry about that. It's just annexations. Um, to be honest, I don't have a lot of updates and I'm pretty out of the loop on these, but except for the Monroe thirty is going to be going to council tomorrow night. So Nita will be taking that city council for public hearing, I believe. Or is it just introduction?
No, um, so actually I'm, I'm happy to do a quick update. On the corner annexation, uh, the city council held their public hearing and gave the go-ahead to submit it to. The Snohomish Boundary Review Board. It does meet the, um, criteria for exemption and if all went well, that would have been submitted last week. So I just need to follow up with Amy on that one. We're hoping that it will be wrapped up here, uh, quickly. So the next phase after the BRB approves it, then the council adopts ordinance. On the Monroe and, uh, the Monroe thirty, that public hearing was held, um. Earlier this year, the Snohomish County Boundary Review Board did not invoke jurisdiction, which means they have approved it. But before, um, the city council can approve it. When they reviewed it and approved it for about that ten percent, remember annexations are a two-step. Actually, you probably haven't been introduced to annexations now that I'm thinking about it. So the, just a, a, um. The typical way that annexations occur is an interested party comes to the city of Monroe and they use the petition method. So the first part is notice of intention to annex and that's ten percent of the property owners within the area. Agreed that they want to move forward with an annexation. At that point, a meeting is set, so the applicants can meet with the city council. After that occurs, a public hearing is set. The city council said, yes or no, we're going to accept the area. They can modify the boundaries of the annexation and then they determine indebtedness. So that's if there's any outstanding, um. Taxes that need to be collected on a project that happened, they have to pay their proportionate share. And so after that's done by resolution, then the applicants are then go back out and they have to get sixty percent of the property owners who have. Or they have to get signatures for the property owners that have sixty percent ownership of the value of the land in that area. Once they collect those signatures, then they go back to the city council. The city council has to hold a public hearing after notification is done. Can't remember the total number of times, but we have to provide quite a substantial amount of notification. Then the city council again can say, yep, we'd like to move forward or no, we don't have to, um, no, we don't want it. Then it goes to the county boundary review board and they, uh, they do not take action, it gets approved. They can take action or another agency like a fire district that used to be the big one that would step in, say, all right, we don't like this. Um, annexation for whatever reason, typically it's because of, uh, taxation collection or taxes. And so, uh, assuming the boundary review board approves it, then it has to go back to city council for adoption of ordinance. So for Monroe thirty, it's gone through that whole process. But at that ten percent, there were concerns raised, not only by city council, but staff. Because in the parks plan that was adopted in twenty twenty-two, it identified the need for a five, five acre. Park in that general vicinity. And during the conversations, we were already talking about the need for different kinds of housing. So the city council said, yeah, let's, let's just move forward, but these things, we, we need some mechanism to ensure it happens. As part of the development. Post-annexation. And so the tool to do that is a pre-annexation development agreement. And so that, there's a public hearing for that tomorrow night in front of city council. Again, this is one of the, the, one of the items that council has discretion. It's not quasi judicial. Assuming that that public hearing goes well and the council is happy. Then the council can take action on adopting the ordinance for the annexation itself. So this one's been a little bit complicated. Um, the applicants have agreed to the five acre tract. And they are looking at a combination of a detached housing and townhomes. Yeah. Education.
Would you?
And that's all I have for the monthly report unless there may be any questions. Questions for anyone? No. Okay, thank you, Mia. Moving forward to agenda item eight, discussion by commissioners and staff. All right, Kelsey, we'll go ahead and start with you online.
Good. Great meeting, everyone. Thank you, staff. Lot of work went into all that, so thank you. And also actually I had a question for Kate, for the critical areas. Next step, do you just want us to look at the definitions for next meeting or, um, should we be, should we read all of that or wait for different sections of it?
I, I would love it if you just start familiarizing yourself with the information I provided. There's a lot in here. It's a little bit overwhelming. So if you start kind of. I got a few minutes to read this. That's what I recommend. Because I'll be bringing, um, actual proposed amendments in chunks to you over the next few months.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep.
And, um, I went to the Monroe Powwow on the twenty-fifth and it was amazing. It was really cool. I didn't know that, um, they were actually. The rea- part of the reason they have them is to bring, um, non-native people. Into it and teach about their culture and they had a couple of dances where we could do it with them and every step is like healing the earth. It was really special and. Um, really well put on. So, um, that was a fun community event that I went to. That's all I have.
Oh, I have nothing except great meeting, good job, staff. Oh, I do have a, a request is, um, can we go to the engineering group? Find out. What, what, what is driving that code? Regarding the utility connections.
We will work with public works.
Yeah, is it a public safety thing? Is it a?
It's several things. Um, but I will let public works explain that to you. Um, it is tied in with the, um, it's. The same issue, well, not the same, a similar issue applies to your unit lot subdivisions. As does the accessory dwelling units. So I will ask Anita to, to reach out to our engineering staff and see if they would be. Um, available to come and give you a presentation because they were at council recently on this very topic.
Thank you for all the information tonight. A lot to go through. Um, I'm really enjoying the farmer's market. It's good that we're having that now. So nice and, uh. I guess that's it.
I'll go ahead and go, just keep it in order. Um, I attended Monroe Pride yesterday. It was really hot. But it was fun. It's like, uh, the event I think I most look forward to locally every single year, just because. It is just a time full of joy, happiness, um, and belonging. And people can just be, um, unapologetically themselves. Um, it's, we've had, we've been fortunate that it's been a, a zone of like no judgment and it's. It's just so positive to see it every year. It brings such warmth to my heart and it, I, it just fills my bucket for like. A long time afterwards really because the community comes together, um, and rain or shine, and it's just by chance that it. Has repeatedly fallen on like the hottest days of the year, uh, through the whole or of the year so far. Um, and people just still come out and, um, so I, this is my second year as a vendor and so. Um, that was just also cool is to be a small business and be able to be a part of it, but just to see it every year. It's, it's one of my favorites. Um, and then we have not had a meeting since the ribbon cutting at Curryview Park. Um, I had a couple of my kids with me for that. Um, and we got to, it was also a hot day that day. Um, and we discovered quickly that the, the slide and probably some of the other stuff gets really, really hot. Um, and so it is my understanding that the, I, I went and. I think it was Deborah, um, night that I went and talked to, but made sure the city knew and they had already felt to the slide and knew. So I think they're looking at getting like a shaded cover or something to go over. The slide and I believe they have signs out right now as a warning, um, if I recall correctly. Um, but I appreciate that the city paid quick attention to that and that they're looking at, at a way to kind of combat that. Cause otherwise it would just not be this big, beautiful slide. It's like the centerpiece of this park would not be super. Friendly, user-friendly for the kids in most of the sunny parts of the year. So. Um, but it was a super well-attended ribbon cutting. I think they even made comments that there's never been so many people on ribbon cutting before. And so, um, the city has pictures of so many kids that got to, to help and, and be there helping hold the ribbon with city council and, um. It's just, I, I love driving by it every day because it's just a happy place. It's colorful and it's. You can tell it's loved and, and being well-used already by the community. So, um. Yeah, that's it for me. Tell me.
Thank you. I also attended Pride yesterday. It was great visiting with you. And it's an, an event that Monroe has, uh, should be quite, quite proud of. Um, it was like ninety-two boots. I accidentally, it was a temperature and number of boots. And such, um, but it was fun, uh, well-attended. And, um, yeah, I enjoyed it. And the years passed. I've been at the Powwow and then it's another special event that takes place in Monroe. In the years past, I've been at the Powwow and it's another special event that takes place in Monroe that I've enjoyed. And it's a great town to live in. On a personal note, my son got married, so all four of my kids are married now.
Congratulations. Randy?
Kate, I wanted to say that the work that you put into the permitting stuff is a lot. There's a lot of work there, and it's cool how you're trying to be sure that it's like can be used as a guide for people, like the things that we're missing that are being added in and stuff. So thanks for your attention to that. The thing I've done with the community lately, Melanie and I were both on the Monroe School District Facility Advisory Committee, which had a lot of similar interests that we have in here. So they ask public some of the same themes that the school district surveys and our surveys show is people want like community engagement, they want a sense of belonging, they want to have the use of fields and open space and stuff. So and then we were in charge of figuring out if we're having a certain amount of growth, like where the school needs to invest for their buildings and stuff. So that, that will probably be a future conversation that the school district and the city have together. But good news is we're, we're seeing the same goals from the community in both areas. So that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Tony has something.
I also attended the open house for the candidates for the fire chief for the district. And they have four candidates, I got to meet each one and have a conversation. Three of them are internal, they are employed by the local district and one is external. And I would say they have a tough choice.
That's good. All right, Kate?
I'm done.
I have nothing for you. I don't know, but Nita is still here. She's on his, she's listening, but.
Okay, if, if you have a comment, feel free to come back in. Lance, do you have anything?
I'm laughing because Kate deserves to say that she's done. Yeah, these code amendments and, and I, I, I think, you know, this process, and I've had some some communication with, you know, with colleagues in other cities. And our process, I think, is going very well. And we've gotten good input. So it starts with the planning commission, and as we've gone to city council, it, it has, it's been really helpful, a lot of the work that the, the planning commission has done, so thanks. I, I did also attend Pride, and it was different because I think every year before I've been there working a booth. So it was, it was different to be able to just go as a community member. And I'm glad I didn't have to be there all day, honestly, it was, it was brutally hot. So I did want just one update, I don't know if, if some folks, I'm sure are paying attention to social media, but the, there's been some postings on there. The building where Tijuana Restaurant and Papa's used to be has been completed, well, they've completed the outside repairs. So the, the scaffolding is, is down off of that building. And I look forward to seeing what kind of tenant we might get to move into the old Papa's location. And I know that Papa's in their new location is working on permits. Not sure when their, when their opening is scheduled to be. The groundwork has started on Wendy's after I think that project has almost been going on as long as I've been here, or close to it. So that is moving forward as well. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Lance.
Our next meeting should be back in the fire department, station thirty-one. Kate and I were just talking, we're imagining we're going to have at least one, perhaps two more meetings there before we hopefully will get to move back or back into new city hall. And I think Jordy mentioned we're going to have kind of a practice meeting, so we'll be in touch as those get scheduled.
Right? If there are no objections to adjourn the meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.